Water bottle.
Or true?
That's like AC, DC is here. And they took off more prisons and then come back to like the 6th of January. I'm like, where are you?
Let's call to order this meeting of the Mercer County Board of Education. Can we have roll call Mr. Brewer?
Yes, good evening. District one Amber Francesca.
Here.
District two Amy Hart.
Here.
District three Billy Montgomery.
Here.
District four Cliff Pruitt.
Here.
District five Randy Phillips.
Here.
It's now time for our pledge of allegiance.
If everyone will please stand and join us in the pledge. We have second grader Amelia Arnold. It's going to lead us in the pledge. So Amelia, come on up to the microphone. You're just going to let them skip into mine. The taller than you are.
Teaching some new pledge. I am the United States of America. In truth, I am a righteous man. One patient under God. And visible with good reason and justice for all.
Thank you very much for doing that in my collection. Can I please have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Brewer, with the motion, may I have a second?
I'll second.
This is our second, all in favor. Right now it's time for any option nominations for the next two years. So right now we will take nominations for board chair.
I'll nominate Randy Jones. And I second.
All in favor? Very much. Our next time we'll take nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Amber Francesca.
I'll second that. All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
We now need to nominate our board secretary. I'd like to put a motion out for Holly Cook to remain our board secretary.
I'll second.
Ms. Francesca seconds. All in favor? For board treasurer, I'd like to make a motion for Amber Minor to remain the board chair, the board treasurer.
Second.
Mr. Montgomery second, all in favor? And finally, we have a personal appointment for the board attorney. Anyone like to make any nominations?
I'll nominate Edine.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Montgomery second, all in favor? Thank you all very much. It's now time for our recognitions, Mr. Brewer.
A good evening, everyone. And we've got a few recognitions this evening. First up will be the Superior Titan Award winner. We call it Dairy Queen Superior Titan Award winner because each award winner receives a free blizzard to Dairy Queen. So I'll bring that by tomorrow, the coupon for that tomorrow at school and class. A Superior Titan Award winner, a student must have perfect attendance during the month they're being observed, completing all homework assignments and tests, passing grades on all of those, of course, no discipline issues, and they demonstrate great leadership skills and exhibit a winning attitude and spirit toward learning and their peers. So the Superior Titan Award winner for Mercer County Elementary School is Amelia Arnold. Amelia, come on up. The Superior Titan Award winner for Mercer County Intermediate School is Alaina Neighbors. Get her a certificate to her today. The Superior Titan Award winner for King Middle School is Jordan Nelson. Just in time, Alaina Nelson, come on up. Superior Titan Award winner for the Mercer County Intermediate Schools. Alaina, I'll bring your Dairy Queen Blizzard coupon tomorrow to school, okay? I'll give it to you. And then the Superior Titan Award winner for the senior high school is Mason Sanders. All right, congratulations to year four. It's a great honor to be named that for your, out of your entire school. Got a couple other student recognitions. We'd like to recognize, we've got our spelling bee schoolwide, and then we're going to have countywide next week. So the King Middle School Spelling Bee runner-up is Isabel Franks. And our King Middle School Spelling Bee winner is Jude Cadewell. So congratulations to those two and good luck to them as they try to pursue being the county champion.
Congratulations to all the Superior Titan Award winners. We will take about a five-minute break. There is a backdrop if you'd like to get pictures with your students. You're certainly welcome to remain for the board meeting, but we understand if you have other things to do, so we'll take a brief five-minute recess.
How you doing?
Good, sir.
Good.
While we're recessed, you all wanted a cookie to take with you, especially the kids that were here. If you've got one of the cookies up front, we're celebrating board appreciation.
Okay, we will continue on with our monthly board meeting. We have no one signed up for public participation, so we'll start right away with our finance officers report. Lynn.
I finally get to go after someone that's taller than, or that I'm taller than them instead of shorter. Have to move it up. Okay, so for December 2024, our year-to-date actual revenue was just under 22 million. That's a 17% increase from last fiscal year. We have budgeted 29.5 million in revenue, so that leaves a 7.5 that we're still hoping to receive by the end of the year at the minimum. We did collect, you'll see, like we had a whole lot of tax collections back in the month of November, so in December those went down drastically, which that happens after that discount period ends and that kind of thing on the property taxes. So we collected almost 875,000 in local taxes in December. Our SEEP program has received 52% of the revenue that we have budgeted through December. And on the interest side of things, we are at 89.7% through the month of December. So I do expect that to be higher than what we budgeted. On the expense side, we are up 8% on expenses compared to the prior fiscal year at 10.1 million. Of those expenses, the highest categorical expense is in the instruction department with our instruction area of the school district, not just the instruction department, but that's district level and school level instruction at almost 60%. And then the next level, you know, you have school level support, so that's going to be any of your counseling, you know, your counselor positions, your library positions, any service positions or spending that happens out of general fund for that purpose, and that's at 14.4%. As far as our ending balance, it is currently 27% higher than last year, and we're looking like our revenue could exceed what we have budgeted and our expenses could be lower than what we have budgeted. So that's all on the actual monthly financial report. Are there any questions on that?
Amber?
Yes.
I've seen somewhere about the state wasn't sure about the SEEP fund, if it was going to maybe decrease or not be as much or whatever. Did you hear anything?
Yes, we just received some notification last week about a potential shortfall for SEEP funds. We're not exactly 100% sure on how much that shortfall is yet. We have not received our final SEEP numbers from KBE yet. They're in the middle of working on those. And then, of course, they come across the fact that there could be a shortfall, which then means that they kind of go back to the drawing board on dispersing funds. So this was the first year that we had increased the per pupil amount again, and transportation was supposed to be funded at a higher percentage than it has been in many years or so. Just speculating, if I had to guess, the transportation piece is probably going to be lowered back down at least. The good thing is, is that we always budget under where they tell us we're going to be in the beginning, because this has happened numerous times over the last eight years that I've been here as finance officer. So we don't ever budget the maximum of what is told to us that we can potentially receive when they give us those draft numbers and then even when they give us the tentative numbers. So we should be sitting okay regardless because we didn't budget the highest number that they had originally given us. So we budgeted under that. But, you know, it does mean, you know, what does that mean for next year? I'm not sure. You know, I do know that in years that there are excess SEEP funds, we don't receive those back. But in years that we have a shortfall, they take, you know, they rearrange the numbers and we don't receive the funding they originally promised us.
I'll add to that. I was telling Amber earlier today that last week I was in a meeting with the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Fletcher, and he said there was going to be a shortfall more than likely, and he's going to ask the General Assembly during this short session to fund that shortfall. So we'll see what comes out of that as well.
And a lot, you know, you have, I was in a training Wednesday through Friday last week with other finance officers, and, you know, some of them were kind of freaking out about it, but honestly, I told Mr. Brewer earlier, until we really know what it actually means for us, I mean, is there a possibility? Every single year there's a possibility. So us hearing legislators or KBE stating it, to me, is no different than us already, you know, planning that that could happen. So once we find out what that means for us, all of them know, and, you know, we'll readjust if we need to, but we should be okay because we don't budget at the full amount anyway. Okay, so moving on to the draft budget. So the draft budget is the first step in the budgeting process for the next fiscal year. So that's what we're looking at here. And the board just has to review it. That's why I put it in with finance officers' reports, so you can see it. I did send this to you all, I don't know, a week and a half ago, somewhere around there. All my days are running together with snow days and all of that kind of stuff. So some of the main takeaways of this budget, we have our total revenue that's budgeted at 28.5 million. And then the receipts in the year are budgeted at 22.5 million. That includes, you know, the overall total includes the beginning balance of 6 million. So we don't have any change put into this as far as that local revenue. So for tax revenue, that's not accounted for in here because we won't really know what that looks like until typically July or August. So at that time, we will make adjustments to that working budget time. So our next round will be, of budgeting will be in May. And a lot of the time that's when we look at salary schedules and we try to shore up the expense side as much as possible. We try to get a better understanding of what our ending balance for this current fiscal year will look like. That way we know how we're going to move forward, even if we received, you know, no more revenue than what we were receiving this year, is kind of what we do. So I did put a little bit of an increase in SEEP revenue because of course this has happened before. As I tell everyone, I can make a budget and within an hour, it's incorrect again because of changes that we hear about. But this does have a little bit of an increase in SEEP revenue. It actually is budgeted at the amount that we were budgeted at, or that we were told under our draft SEEP numbers that we would be at for this year from KBE. So it's still lower than what we were told the new per pupil amount for next year is supposed to be, and even increased transportation is still lower than what I had projected for that. So it's still under that, but we can adjust that as we go through the budget cycle if needed. Our total expenses, our budgeted 25.8 million. That's an increase, an overall increase of 106,000 in budgeted expenses from the working budget, so our final budget for the current year we're in, to the new budget for the new year. And that leaves us with a draft budget contingency of 10.75%, which is very strong for draft budget. So of course, I always give the caveat, I'm trying to give you numbers based on what I'm feeling like an ending balance could be when we still have half of a year left. You know, have we been pretty on par with those when we're looking at them in the past? Of course, I look at all of our historical actual numbers and try to make determinations. I basically adjusted the revenue is what I feel comfortable with adjusting at this time in certain areas that we are historically seeing an increase or decrease is what I normally go through and do. Also, the beginning balance, I go ahead and try to update that as much as I possibly can. This budget includes a step increase for all staff, so all current staff sitting in seats, regardless of when we look at staffing numbers. In February area at that board meeting, this is just kind of taking into consideration everyone that's currently here in their current positions, giving them a step for next year, and that's what this budget includes. So as we do staffing numbers and that kind of thing in the next couple of months and we get what that looks like, we'll be adjusting that for the tentative budget in May. And then really overall, the step increase with salary infringement costs about $132,000. But we also had some expense items that I was able to go the opposite way on because we're still adjusting some of those utilities that we have seen some savings in from our energy savings project that at the very beginning I didn't really adjust because then we had COVID that threw us for a loop and we weren't building, so we couldn't really tell necessarily what was the energy savings and what was the fact that we weren't in our buildings full-time. So we're finally getting to that point where I'm feeling comfortable moving some of those numbers, you know, those numbers down, and you can see that. So on any of the sheets that look like this, anything in yellow is a change from the working budget, just that way you can easily point out what has changed. And you can see over there, there are columns that show you the actuals for fiscal year '22, '23, and '24, and then what the working budget is for current year, and then what I have in there for the draft budget. So you can see that I have that for general fund, food service, and daycare, because if food service and daycare funds are, if those two funds are not self-sustaining, we have to make them whole out of general fund. So I like to go ahead and give you those numbers so you can see that we're projecting them to be self-sustainable as well. So other than that, do you all have any specific questions on it after having time to review it? Great.
Thank you very much. Good report. Up next is our attendance and enrollment report. Esther Hazeltine.
Good evening. You've got your attendance report and enrollment report in front of you, and you can see that the hospital is our attendance winner for this past month. And we're probably the only people that are excited about foms because that usually helps attendance greatly during that time period. So we'll make sure you get there, get them the trophy. And Hazeltine, you have to be here to win, so we'll take you to it. But you all have any questions about the report otherwise?
Ozzy had a good run, didn't he?
He did. Thank you.
Next will be our instructional report. Mr. McCallister.
I'm going to talk about our improvement planning. This is our month where of course our schools and the district submits their improvement planning for the year. So every year we, I like to go over with you just the process and how they get to where they are now. It is a very similar process each year, but we are, we kind of go through a process each year of planning for the school year. In the summer, we have all the schools and all the departments build a priority plan with heading into the school year about the things they'd like to focus on. And then after the beginning of the school year, when we get our test scores back, that is our, you know, it's our biggest data moment of the year when it comes to instructional data. And so we try to get them back together after that, and they start building their most formal improvement plan, which is the one that you've seen, that they have to submit to this day. So they work on that from really from September until December, when they present it to their site base at their, you know, at their school. And that is a long-range plan, usually with goals that sometimes throughout a couple of years, but they'll have little benchmarks along the way that they try to meet. So once they put that behind in place, that guides them for the remainder of the year until, again, we get to the summer. And then when we get to the summer, we take all that we've learned, and we build a new priority plan, and we start the process over. So again, we do this every year. What I like to do is always give you a copy of these, and these documents obviously are very long and very specific and stuff. A lot of the goals that are in these things come from mandated goals that they gives us types of goals that they want us to provide. And we have, but the way we go about how we're trying to improve those things are, a lot of times are up to us and what we focus on. So something that you've heard a lot from me over the last few years, you know, we've been really lucky that we've had three, four years of, really four years here of pretty consistent upward progress on all of our measurements that we try to use. And we try to use a lot of different ones. We have state testing, we have our universal screener, eye reading, we give three times a year, we have ACT, we have attendance, we have behavior, we have all these things that we review each month. But our goals are based around something very simple. We try to really focus on fundamental things, and we talked about before, you've heard me talk about, we try to improve proficiency every year, we try to decrease novice every year, and we try to meet a minimum number of growth, our kids achieving adequate yearly growth, and we have those goals for every classroom at every grade. That's kind of the standard we go by, and we always go back to that. We always go back to that. We have some more specific ones. I'm sure Mr. Brewer talked to you about wanting to get to 20 at the ACT. That's one that we always talk about. You know, we have some other specific ones that we talk about with special education and things like that. But those ones are the broad ones that we kind of work on. We figure if every year we can increase proficiency, reduce novice, and keep our kids meeting adequate years' growth, then we'll continue getting good returns. That's what our plan's based around. So what I want you to do is, or I'm just going to give you a really brief overview of just some of the takeaways from the plans of each school. You know, each one of them has a kind of a story that they, where they're at with their instruction, with their data, and we're really familiar with it, but they have to pick out each year things that they're going to focus on. So I just want to highlight a few of those. At the elementary school, you know, the elementary school has had a couple of years here in a row where they've had, again, increasing scores in their universal screener, and so I know they're excited about a lot of those things. There are two major areas of focus for this year where learning targets and objectives in the classroom, and then vocabulary work. And again, those are very hot topics in instruction, you know, working on, working on learning targets and objectives, trying to build more clarity in their lesson, to make sure their lessons are directly aligned with what they're wanting to teach. And then vocabulary work is obviously a big component of reading comprehension and reading achievement for the kids. And so that's something they've been working on for multiple years in a row as well. The intermediate school, the intermediate school is also has had a couple of, a couple of years in a row of great state testing returns. Obviously, state testing starts there at that school. And, you know, we feel like that's, we're all a part of that, but that's where it officially starts, and they've had a couple of really good years of that. I know that they're excited about a new reading program called Benchmark that they've, they just, they just had here, bought here recently, and they've been really impressed with it, continue to move forward with it. We are going to move forward with that at the elementary school next year as well. They, writing, which has been a big district focus, continues to be a big focus for them. I know a big area for them that they really highlighted at the intermediate was that they returned all of their home run teachers this year. That was after a couple of years of really having some turnover and, you know, and hiring a lot of people, and that was an area that they were really, that they were really happy about. Also, they had their non-traditional classroom, which is something that they really highlighted and working on. And they feel like those things are going to help them continue to get those kind of test scores that they've had over the last couple of years. For the middle school, which was four tenths of a point away, I believe, from being a green school, and that's something they've talked about and talked about, their primary focus this year was on, and this sounds a lot like what I was saying at the district level, is about proficiency and reducing novice in the areas of reading, writing, and those classrooms specifically. They feel like with doing those things and doing them well while also continuing to work on school culture and attendance and things like that, that that will be the thing that pushes them into that, to, you know, getting that green designation, which they really want. And then at the high school, the high school has had four years in a row of ACT scores going up every single year. Again, that's not something ever to be taken for granted, but I know that they want to continue that. They made their goals really simple about, they really focused on trying to reduce novice in all of their classrooms, about what kind of areas they feel like that they could go in and make sure to get those novice numbers down, you know, incrementally every single year. And by doing that, they feel like their assessment scores or ACT scores are going to just continue to go up. So once all those schools submit their plans to us, we build plans at the district level. For us, we focused a great deal on writing this past year. We're still focused on that. Next year, we have decided to focus more, which that work has really already started, on reading, really K-12, but we're going to, you know, we're really focusing on grades K-8 to begin with and see how that rolls out. We feel like, again, we focused on very broad things over the last couple of years, and we're trying to get more and more fine-tuned and come down to more specific things. We feel like this is the next step for us, is to working on the, getting a real consistent and strong vibrant reading program, K-5. and strong vibrant reading program, K-5, and then continuing to really highlight having writing in every classroom every day across the district. And we feel like those are the things that will, again, get us to 20th ACT, get us green schools across the board and blue schools. And we just had our winter eye reading. We've been giving that test now for four years, and we give it K-8 in reading and math. So, you know, of those 16, 18, 18 data points for those, you know, all nine, the nine grades for two subjects, 18, I think 10 of those scores were still the highest scores we've ever had at a winter test score. So we still continue to just slowly go up every single time, which is, again, that's what we want. So we feel like these targets will be the thing that will keep us moving and progressing in those areas. So anyone have any questions after that?
In progress. Thank you, sir. The personnel report is next. I think everyone should have had an opportunity to look at that ahead of time. So with that, we can move on to Mr. Brewer's superintendent's report.
Again, good evening. It's School Board Appreciation Month in the month of January, and I know you all got some gifts and some goodies and some nice cutting board with you, it looks like. And we've got some cookies over here if anybody wants to take those. And I know Ms. Stacy did an appreciation board back there for you today as well. But we also got a plaque for each one of you, that certificate, framed certificate, and I like to read it. It says, "In grateful recognition of your dedicated service and unwavering commitment to the success of Mercer County Schools, we extend our deepest thanks for your exemplary service as a member of the Board of Education. Your leadership, vision, and passion have made a lasting impact on our school community, and we are truly grateful for the time, effort, and care you have devoted to the advancement of education in Mercer County Schools." So we appreciate you all, and I'll come around. Again, from all the staff and students of Mercer County Schools, on behalf of them, I'll say thank you, Corona drone's efforts for our school system. I also want to say thank you, I know Will Carlton's here, thank you for our maintenance and transportation departments through all this weather, and our custodial crews for getting our campuses ready for our students and staff members. And also, I had a meeting with the mayor and the judge executive last week, and I told them, I just want to tell you all, you two, that I appreciate your county and city road crews, because they allow us to have school by doing a fabulous job on our roads, unlike, you know, compared to a couple of other school districts surrounding them that had to call off because their roads weren't ready to go. So again, congratulations to all the, or not congratulations, thank you to all those departments and all the work that they did, not only in our school system, but our city and our county as well. Good news on the energy savings contract. We met with CMTA last week to go over this past year's energy usage for the district, and there's a guaranteed savings, but we went on top, plus $5,245, we were under the guaranteed saving contract. So that $5,245 goes back to the general fund, which we saved, meaning we saved even more on top of that guaranteed savings with the contract with CMTA. So this is additional money, again, that goes into our general fund. Academics, we talked about the spelling bee that's coming up. Students will compete in the district spelling bee this Thursday, and the winner will compete in the county spelling bee at King Middle School this year on January 27 at 6:00 PM. So good luck to those two. Interviews for our governor scholar program, candidates were conducted. We wish, we wish them the best of luck. We sent seven names. I hope, we're hoping to get all seven of those into the governor scholar program for this summer. Those are seven really strong candidates. We're also excited about, we're going to take a team to the Ron Clark Academy, which is a school down in Atlanta, Georgia. And our goal, our goal is to bring back proven strategies to make our school district and our schools and our classrooms even better. And so it's a, we're, it's going to be a very good learning experience. We're taking a couple faculty members from each school, and they're going to come back and share out to their faculty. Will be the next steps when we get back, and we're going to use the strategies that we learned down there in order to implement those, some of those into each one of our classrooms. And it's just going to make our school system so much stronger. They do such a tremendous job, and they have people come all from around the world to see what they're doing, is how great a place that is, school that is down there. Athletics, our boys basketball team, congratulations to them. They made school history. They won their first, first-class AA sectional tournament. They competed in Owensboro this past weekend. I was fortunate to get to go down and watch them play in their first state tournament. They had a good showing, ran into a very tough Harlan County team that made it to the finals of the Sweet 16 last year and had about everybody back except Trent Noah. They played good, and they played there at Bryant Station tonight. So we wish them good luck tonight as well. Our wrestling team is having a great first year. I think there's so much excitement around our wrestling program right now in their inaugural season, but we want to invite everybody in the community out to the senior night, which is tomorrow night. I believe you said 6:30 is what time the announcement will start with the seniors. So 6:30 tomorrow night at our high school gym. I believe we play LCA. Do elementary school update? I know we've got Trace Creek here, and I saw a video pop up earlier.
Yes, my computer did a required update. Can we just check?
Always does it at those.
Good time for it.
Well, she can have it for later. You all can give it. What it mostly looks like right now is a nice winter wonderland out there. Since our last progress, we, progress went very well until all of this weather hit. The crews have been able to, they've completed all the underschlapp in the area A, which is a preschool with the kindergarten section, and was able to get that slab forward. They've completed all the foundations in area D, and the underschlapp work has begun in that. The area D is your first grade area. I'll start trying to give you all better reference of what I'm talking about, sort of areas, because you all. There you go. Very nice little picture, it just makes it a little difficult to work with that. We were able to, contractors were able to get all the hollow metal doors in in area E, which is the area that you see the orange concrete blankets at the top of the wall, which we're working on the, they're working on the concrete beam that's part of your storm shelter, concrete slab roof. They've continued with the eight-inch and 12-inch corridor and cross walls in there. The area that you see closest to you with one wall on the end, that was the area A that I was referring to. Hopefully this weather gets out of here and the temperatures get back up, where we can, where they can continue to pick up work with that. Contractors on site as much as they can, except been impressed with the guys working, some of the guys working in these frigid temperatures. Of course, they're limited to what they can do, they're limited to what concrete they can pour. They do work around as best they can and prepare. At the end of last week, they were able to make a couple of concrete floors in those areas that we've talked about. And right now, watching the weather forecast, and they're working every day, they're playing on another concrete board toward the end of this week. So this time of year, unfortunately, it does happen, it slows construction down, but it's revered for that, it's prepared for that, so it's kind of built into your overall script. And we'll just make as much progress as we can as the weather allows, and pray for better weather.
Thank you, sir.
Excited to see it coming down storm here.
We've started seeing things up and things going in the ground.
Yeah.
It's always makes me thankful for having a job that a lot of, you know, most of our time in this, you know, education is indoors. And when you go by there and they're working out laying block every day out in this cold and the snow, you know, a lot of times I've seen them laying block, the snow coming down, it's been something. But again, thank you for your update on the new elementary school. And then last thing, speaking of snow or cold weather, we will be on a one-hour delay tomorrow. This will give our transportation department an extra hour to get all the buses started. And when it's this cold, they have to do a little bit more to them, but they got them all started this morning. It was cold this morning. Like I said, we got to layer up and muddle up, and we'll have another good day of learning tomorrow. But we will be on a one-hour delay from tomorrow, more than that transportation to get the bus started, an extra hour. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And I want to, and you guys certainly are welcome to throw in your comments, but I do want to say thank you to everyone who bestowed upon us some really wonderful gifts. I'm only a wagon, but it's much appreciated by everybody. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, and I want to look at these forward, I want to say I am blessed to work with the best team around. And I currently appreciate all of you all for taking the time to do this, and just, it truly is an honor for me to work with every single one of you. So just know that I'll always appreciate all of you all, so thank you very much. Back at you.
Been here long enough, but it hasn't been this long. I'm just saying that.
Our consent agenda items are next. Everyone's had an opportunity to look at those. One of the others, we do have the board meeting dates, times on 12G there. Of course, we'll do one meeting throughout the year at one of our schools, which gives us a chance to showcase, and we always enjoy going to the schools and seeing what they, what they've got going on. It's always a good meeting, so anything else you might have.
Well, just on that, I think last year we had to move one or two off of the third Tuesday, but I believe all 12 of these dates are actually, 13 dates are on the third Tuesday, still at 5:30 PM. And King Middle School will be in February, the elementary school will be in April, support meeting. September will be the high school, and then November will be the intermediate school again, so.
And everybody's got those meetings and things at times? Everyone's, you're good with the things at times?
Yeah, I think so.
And the item 12E, with all the weather we've had the last few weeks, I'm glad to see we're putting out mowing bids, so hopefully spring will be coming around and grass will start growing.
Makes you feel better, doesn't it?
Yeah, makes you feel a little better, and spring's on the way, hopefully.
Any questions or items for discussion in the consent agenda? If not, can I have a motion for approval?
Make it motion.
Mr. Montgomery with the motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Franceski, second. All in favor? We have one item for discussion, and that's our calendar updates for this school year. Ms. Franceski.
Well, January's been more minimal than we would like, so hopefully you all have gotten that sheet and kind of lays it out, because it has been an busy January. So January 6, we were supposed to come back and have an in-person teacher work day, which is a planned day. We did not bring staff in that day. We are going to swap that out for professional development place holder day. So that's a day that teachers have more than likely worked this summer, and we have a place holder in the calendar just to place those out. So we will have to make up that planned day later, and that was made up on the 9th of January, when staff was able to come in. I think that was a Thursday. So the 6th, staff was supposed to work, but students weren't coming in. The 7th, 8th, 9th, and 10th were supposed to be instructional days. The 9th, we were able to have that planned day, so staff was able to come in and work before students came back. And then moving down, we've got to make up the days, the instructional days that the students missed, so we'd like to move those up to, move those to the end of the year. So January, the 7th would be made up on the 20th, and then we would make up the 21st, the 22nd, and then the last student day would be the 23rd at this point, which would be an early release day. That would make the 19th, which was an early release day, a fall student day. And then we would like to take March the 14th, which was a break for students, but was that professional place holder day for staff, we would like to turn that into a makeup day just in case we need to use it. So we still have President's Day, but it is a makeup day, and then the March 14th would give us two days added for makeup days, if the weather, if we needed, so. And closing day would be the 27th after Memorial Day at the moment. If we missed beyond those two days, we would still add those to the end of the year, so we still have to make them up, unless we got into NTI days. So there is one.
So at what point will we go to NTI?
Probably Mr. Brewer, because he makes those decisions.
Well, right now, our plan is if we have one day out of 4 February 17th, that automatically becomes the day of school. So February 17th, that red date there. If we have two days prior to February 17th, then February 17th and March 14th become a school day. And then if we have one day in between those two, obviously March 14th would become a school day. So that gives us two days still to play with, hopefully. And then beyond that, we'll have to look at, you know, our biggest thing is if we can get out, you know, before June 1st usually. They used to say anything after Memorial Day, but that was the day when tests were given in a block window from May 1st till May 10th, the first week of May or first two weeks of May. Now they changed that because people were saying nothing gets, you know, done in classrooms, you know, after Memorial Day. Now they changed the state testing is the last two weeks of school regardless of when you get out. So that kind of takes away that testing May 1st, and then you've got a month of school left, and there's, you know, all the tests are open. So NTI, we've, all of our principals have come back from Christmas break, and they've, at their, at that meeting on January, what was it, the 9th, went over with their staff the NTI plans that we had to use those, and then the staff was instructed to go over with their students when they come back. You know, one thing that a couple of the school system around here ran into is coming back from Christmas break and hit before they were able to return, and so all this, most of the students didn't have their Chromebooks, and it's hard to do NTI without your Chromebook. So we'll continue to look at that, and, you know, we've never used NTI since I've been here, but we're prepared to do it if this winter keeps on like it has been the last few weeks. You know, I always say that NTI, one thing we learned through COVID is that in-person learning is what's best for kids. So that's what we've tried to do our best, you know, because I think about, you know, school systems are allowed legally to take 10 NTI days per year. The commissioner told us last week that he's going to ask for them to give an additional five for this school year from the General Assembly. So, you know, when I do the math, and you take 10 NTI days times 12 school years, you know, kindergarten, first grade through 12th grade, really, you could do 13 in kindergarten, that's almost a whole school year of your child's education spent online. And it just, I just know if, you know, in-person is what's best for kids. I'm not going to pull, you know, the string real quick and then do 10 NTI days every single year, because I know at the end of the day, or at the end of the senior year, a kid's going to be almost an entire school year on, over the course of their career as a student here, you know, as a, on virtual student. So we try to limit those. If we do have to use them, we're ready to. I mean, our staff is prepared and ready for that, so.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just, I guess I was just trying to see what, like, how, how far we could push out without having to use them.
Yeah.
Without answers to some questions.
So we still have that follow-up week.
We need to be up by the end of May.
Yeah, so we still have that follow-up week to use for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'll probably have to come back and do in a year approval, I think it's way too early to do it now, so this is just for informational, it's fine, but I'll be back. Hopefully we get through February and March.
Well, I think all our seniors are going to be wanting to stay where we're at. They probably don't want to go. After the Memorial Day.
Senioritis is a real day. You want to finish strong today.
Exactly. Okay, we do have two action items and roll call vote. The first one is 14A, purchase dump truck, dump bed truck. Everybody's in, up to you, look at that. You want to add any comments?
Yeah, Mr. Carlton's here, he can add to it, and Ms. Minor as well. So we surplused our, I don't know if old is the correct word, but our very, very old, I guess, dump truck a few months ago. We need a new dump bed truck. Also on our dump truck was the plow, and that also held our salt box to put, to spread the salt. the salt. So those are really, really expensive things to contract out. We learned that over the last couple of weeks especially. So we, all three of us tried to look and find all the dump bed trucks that are out there and get quotes from them, and said, we told them that we're going to go to the board and ask them to, to select one of the bids or quotes on, on these dump bed trucks. On the dump bed truck, you buy it without the plow on the front. We also have two trucks in the, in the district, one in maintenance, one in transportation, that can hold a plow as well. So our thinking is, is if we approve a dump bed truck to purchase, we'll, tomorrow, we would also purchase three plows, one for the new dump truck, dump bed truck, and then two, one for each of the trucks that we have currently in our fleet. The low bid or the low, the low quote that we've got is out of a Jeff Wyler up in Fort Thomas, Kentucky, for a 2024 Ram 2500 four-wheel drive rig or cab, nine-foot dump bed. So we've looked at all these, and they fluctuate. I mean, they're, we've bound them all the way up, you know, like you see, up to 70 or almost 80, $80,000. So there's a big fluctuation in price. But I'm, I'm going to recommend that we take the low one out of those eight or 10 that are listed there and go with the Jeff Wyler 2024 Ram 3500 truck. And also with that, we, since that's in Fort Thomas, we haven't driven up there to look at it, and I'd also like the motion to be, if there is one, to approve the purchase of this dump bed truck pending district in-person inspection. That way, we inspect that in person just to make sure it's what we, we see online, and it's not bought sight unseen.
You know, I'm sure there's plenty of uses other than just with plow during wintertime too. You probably need the dump truck quite often.
Well, I know they do mulch, the bus turnarounds, they take the gravel out into the county and do where the bus turn, where the buses turn around in the summertime. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that, that we use that?
Well, the two biggest items, and we're also the garbage disposal for all major big items, you know, at least three or four times a year, all of our custodians know to put up their junk in a specific spot, and we'll come and get it and take it to the county now, and so that always helps with that.
Yes. If no other questions, then can I have a motion to purchase a low bid from Jeff Wyler for a 2024 Ram 3500 pending district inspection approvals? Can I give a, or district pending inspection in person? So can I give a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Mrs. Franceski makes a motion. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Mr. Montgomery, second.
One question. Do we, do we know the mileage on this, or?
It's brand new.
Is it new?
It's like 200 miles.
Do you know if it's new or if it?
Yes, 204. It's brand new.
Is it?
Mr. Brewer, I decided.
Yeah.
I get what you pay for it. You find them used, but everything that you find used typically is eaten with rust, because they're used for the same thing, for salting and scraping, and you do that.
That's, that's why I asked that, is if it, if it was a used one, 204, if it was a used one, then there may be something.
59 grand may not sound like much of a deal, but generally looking at these things, that's, that's, that's a new model that didn't sell first time around, and so that's why we're a $2,000 cheap new one.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was hoping. I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mrs. Franceski, her second. Mr. Montgomery, can we have a roll call vote, sir?
Yeah. District one, Amber Franceski.
Yes.
District two, Amy Hart.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. The final item is a renovation of the restrooms, KMS. This is just for BG4.
The BG4 has information on it related to project closeout, so it has the certificate of occupancy, so any of the approvals from inspections, and also all of the closeout materials that are required, so warranties, ONNs, extra materials, and the potential list has been included.
Beth, just for our knowledge, is what was this with the total cost of construction? What was the final number approximately under?
I don't have that in front of me. I think we only had one change order for the floor drains, and it was like $1,800, so it, it was, I think the bid was.
No, I mean, I didn't mean it that, I mean, under what we expected it to cost.
Oh, it was about $150,000 under. Yeah.
We saved, it was 150 under what we thought was.
Yes, so contingency wasn't used, there's a lot of done on it too.
And I guess in the bids the year before, when we tried to get somebody to do it, were even higher than that.
Well, no one would bid it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Appreciate it. Can I please have a motion for approval?
I'll make it.
Mr. Montgomery makes a motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Pruitt, second. Roll call, sir.
District one, Amber Franceski.
Yes.
District two, Amy Hart.
Yes.
District three, Billy Montgomery.
Yes.
District four, Cliff Pruitt.
Yes.
District five, Randy Phillips.
Yes. If no further business, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. R makes a motion. Mr. Pruitt has a second. All in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.
So they're officially closed out, Amy, Beth?
Um, Amy, I'm sorry. I didn't have all the time. I did have all the time.
Please.
Or copy.
Too early, too early to do it yet.
Easy, easy. You got everything going in your voice?
I'm sorry.
Nice one, too. No, Lord, bring that over next time I'm around.
Yes.
Don't work.
Yes, we're driving around.
Original bid was $650,000, $316.
Yes, sure, if they're not, just make a double picture. We'll sell them and be on the way.
Right here.
Anything you need for us?
We need a lot of chairs.
I'm on the roof, I'm on the roof, close down, they're all around.
We don't have a building.
We have a little part of it.
I'm thinking of nothing.
He even told us we get stolen again.
So I can't.
Well, I think it's a little bit of time.
He said, you need anything about us on our end, or source to be honest.
You have it in one time and wear. Just get down, we get another one, we can get the, keep our minds satisfied. All right, you got less carry out, here, let us, you going out, let us carry these hard samples. Let him carry those hard samples out.
Try to, try to.
She doesn't like it. It's real.
He's got a bitch.
Did she tell you what she can do this way?
She did. She, I'm the place, like, you don't.
King.
Actually, now she just have to serve. It's one of them.
I'll carry.
It's being all crazy. Uh, it's not.
But not.
That was good, but.
Well, we didn't want.
Yeah, she's just like, not aggressive. Yeah, I'm so used to watching her, like, getting her face, even though you're trying for it. She's just feeling like, you have to work on.
We don't know.
She feels like it comes her way, but it's like, she's still not.
We got some.
But.
She.
That's right.
Well, it's like, you don't have to tire yourself.
Snow was out there, so.
I don't know, that chain knows that.
Oh, yeah.